Good evening. This, the 120th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. I ask if you have cellphones, please turn them off or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Bishop Charles S. Waters of the Word of Faith Christian Center. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, can we bow our heads in the word of prayer? Father, we thank you for this wonderful opportunity to come together as a united city. We thank you for every opportunity that you have allowed us to have. We thank you for all of those who are in attendance. Bless our hearts and bless our minds, and we pray that over this city, that great things will continue to happen. We thank you for peace. We thank you for all the miracles, all the things that will happen, to be a blessing to the young and old, all nationalities. We thank you for it today. Be with us, guide our hearts, guide our hands, and guide our minds to make the greatest executive orders that will better do our city and do great things even in years to come. We thank you for it, and in Jesus' name we say, "Amen."
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bishop. I thank Bishop Waters of Word of Faith Christian Center for the invocation. The clerk will call the role of the members.
President Young, Scott, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Ryssinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark, and Welsh. Mr. President, would you require them?
Today's showcase presentation is the Kids Tour of Baltimore by City Neighbors Elementary School. Let's welcome them.
Our names are Lola and Mackay. We are in the 3rd grade at City Neighbors Charter School. Thank you for having our class here. We are glad to be here. We have made a Baltimore travel guide for kids by kids and would like to present it to you.
We wanted to show you our travel guide and how hard we worked on it. We wanted to recommend it to other people who visit Baltimore. Our class included kid-friendly restaurants and attractions, so more families with kids could come to Baltimore.
The project started as finding the favorite parts of us, our school, and our neighborhoods. When we tried to decide on the best part of Baltimore, we couldn't all agree. We made a list of places that we thought were kid-friendly in Baltimore.
Our teacher met with Visit Baltimore to ask for ticket donations to those places. While she was there, she found out that Visit Baltimore only had travel guides for adults written by adults. We knew that was a problem, so we decided to make our own travel guide for kids by kids. We added restaurants and attractions to our list of places to visit, so that travelers would know where the best places for kids were.
Each of us chose three places we wanted to visit through persuasive writing. We convinced our teacher to let us go to the places we wanted to explore. We decided what information we needed for our travel guide. In groups of three or four, we visited the places on different days and collected information for our field guide. We couldn't all go at once, so parent volunteers drove us to the places.
When we were exploring, we took photographs along with filling out papers. We brought information back to the class and decided if each place was kid-friendly or not. We checked flyers from those places to fact-check our information.
The groups then went to the computer to make each travel guide page. A parent volunteer gave us advice and got us started working with the computer. Then our class voted and chose a cover.
After we finished, WBIL-TV came for a visit and reported our travel guide on the news. Our travel guide is complete and will be available at the visitor's center on the Inner Harbor for the public and especially kids.
Thank you again for having us.
It was an honor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for most of the generalize the prayer, motion by Councilman Scott, second by Council Vice President Ryssinger. All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, the motion is carried. We'll now proceed with adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general proceedings from the May 16 City Council meetings on the council members' desk.
There are motions to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Craft, second by Councilman Scott. All of them favor adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. Councilman, before you say anything, reading through this travel guide, I had to ask the kids one thing, because they have some good taste. I wanted to ask them, how was the crab cakes at Coco? I didn't go to Coco's. Coco's has some of the best crab cakes, but I seen it in the book. Okay. Because they picked some nice spots here in this travel guide for kids. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, that's a question that you shouldn't ask in Baltimore. Coco's has the best crab cakes in Baltimore. It says so in the book, actually, yeah. Mr. President, I would like to suspend rules to invite these guests to the floor.
Second by Council Vice President, I mean by Councilwoman Clark. All of them favor suspending rules to allow Councilman Scott's guests to take the floor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have a council resolution for Ms. Tracy Pendriss, 3rd grade class in the great City Neighbors Charter School in the 2nd District of Baltimore City that I'm going to present to them, and it reads as follows. I, Brandon M. Scott, Councilman of the 2nd, Councilman of the District, offer my sincerest congratulations to Tracy Pendriss, 3rd grade class of City Neighbors Charter School, in recognition of the occasion of creating and presenting Baltimore's first ever travel guide for kids, Baltimore for Kids by Kids, to the Baltimore City Council and the citizens of Baltimore. Your creativity and hard work are greatly appreciated. Signed this 6th day of June 2016 by myself, Councilman Brandon M. Scott, and all members.
Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby.
Mr. President, I ask that we extend four privileges to my guests.
Second by Council Vice President Ryssinger. All of them favor extending four privileges to Councilman Mosby's guests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Your guests may take the floor.
The principals from schools in West Baltimore, to please come forward. The principals. So, everyone understands ago, a little about a year ago, a little over a year ago, Baltimore was at the height of all the attention around, not just this country, but this nation. And I think a lot of times when we get caught up on the emotions and we get caught up on the issues at our hand, we forget about the most vulnerable variables in those particular situations. That most vulnerable variable were the children of West Baltimore. The children who, on their blocks, had houses on fire, the children that had helicopters going across their skies at night, the children that was witness to all this trauma and violence in the communities. The one thing that we've been working on in the past years, directly working with all the principals in the affected area, to ensure that one had the resources, but ensure that they can get their schools back up to the level that they were prior to the unrest. So I wanted to make a public statement today to thank the principals of the schools in these particular areas, because they have done a tremendous job of ensuring that, as normalization can be brought back to the schools and to the children and to their families, that we do so through resources and through outreach and through help. So, a lot of times, we don't necessarily thank our principals and our teachers enough, but I wanted to publicly thank you guys for all the hard work you've done in the very traumatic stance. So, I have resolutions for the principals, from Principal Allman at Coppin Academy to Principal Kelvin Bridges, not here. Oh, you're here for principals? Okay. Your name, sir?
Bill Wilder.
Okay, nice to meet you, Mr. Wilder. Yes. Principal Durham from Gilmore, as well as Principal Felder, who's a high school classmate of mine at Gwinns Falls. And I will read one of the resolutions. If you guys could pull them out, so we can take a picture. And Council President, if you could come down, so we can quickly get through all this. So it says, "The City Council Baltimore Resolution. Be hereby known to all that the City Council Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to, in recognition of your outstanding leadership in guiding your school and students toward academic excellence. This entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented this 6th day of June 2016." Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to take a picture with the president.
So we're going to move this quickly. Three weeks ago, we had our 4th Annual 7th District Zoo Day at the Baltimore Zoo. We had some amazing partners and a lot of bright faces. It's the second-largest event at this zoo every year. We bring about 2,000 kids from West Baltimore, many of which live right in the heart of West Baltimore, but have never, ever gone to the Maryland Zoo. So, again, this is the 4th year as our partners, and we want to thank all the partners and staff and folks that helped out for an amazing day at the zoo, about 2,800 people. Not only did they get a chance to participate in the zoo, but also a free pizza party afterwards. And we would like to call up the representative from Black professional men. Mr. Thames. The Maryland Zoo and Diane. And the lead volunteer for the day. If you guys could take them out. Miller Transportation, they always help us out every single year. Thank you. Pizza Bowlys is always a strong partner for us. The kids love the pizza from Pizza Bowlys. They've been with us since the first year, from the inception. And then last, but not least, MECU, the Maryland Employees Credit Union. Municipal. So again, our children are given an amazing day, and it could not happen if it wasn't for your hard work, your dedication, and your support of the program. This is the 4th year. We took over 2,000 kids to the zoo, and they had a wonderful time. The rain stayed away, and we thank you for this. So we're going to take a picture with the president. Thank you.
Executive appointments withdrawn.
Executive appointment EA 16-0310, Mark Anthony Daniels, Member Civilian Review Board, 7th District.
Those to be introduced.
City Council Bill 16-0677, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, $40 million. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $40 million to Department of Transportation Service 688 to provide funding for additional operating expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0678, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Police Department, $26 million. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $26 million to Police Department Service 622 to provide funding for additional operating expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0679, Street Encroachment, 201 North Schroeder Street. Ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the construction and maintenance of a portion of a building projecting into the public right-of-way on the east side of North Schroeder Street, the north side of Lexington Street, and the west side of North Amity Street on the property known as 201 North Schroeder Street, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0680, Street Encroachment, 101 North Schroeder Street. Ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the construction and maintenance of a portion of a building projecting onto the public right-of-way on the east side of North Schroeder Street, on the south side of West Lexington Street, the west side of North Amity Street, and the north side of West Fayette Street on the property known as 101 North Schroeder Street, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0681, City Streets Closing a Portion of West Franklin Street. Ordinance for the purpose of condemning and closing a portion of West Franklin Street, extending from Allendale Street, easterly 105 feet to the east side of a 15-foot alley, as shown on plat 306A 22A in the Office of Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0682, Sale of Property, The Former Bed of a Portion of West Franklin Street. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council of Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, alter interest in a certain parcel of land known as the former bed of a portion of West Franklin Street, extending from Allendale Street, easterly 105 feet to the east side of a 10-foot alley, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration. Extending from Allendale Street, easterly 105 feet to the east side of a 15-foot alley, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0683, City Streets Opening the Beds of Heniman Avenue and a 10-foot alley. Ordinance for the purpose of condemning and opening the beds of Heniman Avenue and a 10-foot alley bounded by East Biddle Street, North Wolf Street, East Chase Street, and Rutland Avenue, as shown on plat 299A 16 in the Office of Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0684, City Streets Closing the Beds of Heniman Avenue, a 10-foot alley and a 20-foot alley. Ordinance for the purpose of condemning and closing the beds of Heniman Avenue, a 10-foot alley and a 20-foot alley, bound by East Biddle Street, North Wolf Street, East Chase Street, and Rutland Avenue, as shown on plat 299A 16A in the Office of Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0685, Sale of Property, The Former Beds of Heniman Avenue, a 10-foot alley and a 20-foot alley. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council of Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, alter interest in certain parcels of land known as the former beds of Heniman Avenue, of a 10-foot alley, and of a 20-foot alley bounded by East Biddle Street, North Wolf Street, East Chase Street, and Rutland Avenue, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0686, Muted Parking Multispace Methods. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing certain alternative methods for the operation of multi-space muted parking, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related language, repealing obsolescent provisions, and generally relating to the installation operation of muted parking systems. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0687, Valley Parking Offenses by Operators and Hosts. Ordinance for the purpose of correcting an inadvertent omission in the statutory list of offenses by valley parking operators that are subject to various administrative sanctions and civil fines, conforming that list to the otherwise consonant list applicable to offenses by valley parking hosts, and modifying the civil fines to be imposed for various valley parking-related offenses based upon the relative severity. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0688, Rezoning 320 South Highland Avenue. Ordinance for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 320 South Highland Avenue, as outlined on red in the accompanying plat, from the B-22 zoning district to the B-23 zoning district. Sponsored Craft.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0689, Rezoning 300 North Warwick Avenue. Ordinance for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 300 North Warwick Avenue, as outlined on red in the accompanying plat, from the M-21 zoning district to the B-33 zoning district. Sponsored Welsh.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0690, Rezoning 3020 Garrison Boulevard. 3013, 3015, 3017, 3019, and 3021 Chelsea Terrace, and 3805, 3807, and 3809 Bonner Road. Ordinance for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3020 Garrison Boulevard, 3013, 3015, 3017, 3019, and 3021 Chelsea Terrace, and 3805, 3807, and 3809 Bonner Road, as outlined on red in the accompanying plat, from the R-6 zoning district to the R-8 zoning district. Sponsored Middleton.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm supporting this rezoning on behalf of the Whale and Development Corporation. It's in preparation for Whale and Village 2, and those of you that are familiar with Whale and Village 1 on Garrison Boulevard, you know that it has been a successful housing facility for seniors. So we're now in preparation for Whale and Village 2. We also have present representatives of the Whale and Development Corporation, and that's Lawrence Campbell and Scott Phillips that are here as well, representing. This is very much supported by the community and the association, and looking forward to a great and successful hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0691, RPP Area 41 Plan Amendment. Ordinance for the purpose of amending the parking management plan for RPP Area 41 to reauthorize certain special permits for the Baltimore Station, 140 West West Street, and correcting related provisions. Sponsored Costello.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a negotiated compromise between the Baltimore Station, which serves veterans with substance abuse issues, and the Sharp-Litten Hall Improvement Association to provide six RPP passes for their employees. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0692, Property-Assessed Clean Energy Loan Program. Ordinance for the purpose of establishing a property-assessed clean energy loan program to assist qualifying commercial property owners to finance energy improvements through non-accelerating pace loans from participating private lenders, authorizing the city to collect pace loan payments owed to a private lender, as well as certain pace program administrative costs, through a surcharge on the property owner's real property tax bill, providing that an unpaid surcharge constitutes a lien on the real property on which it is imposed, providing for the scope of an eligibility for participation in the pace loan program, providing for the administration of the pace loan program, establishes default procedures, defining certain terms, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored Costello, President Young, Scott Middleton, Henry, Holton, Stokes, Clark, Specter.
Please note, Councilman Craft, Councilman Kern, Councilman Mosby, Council Vice President Ryssinger, and Councilman Welsh as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, pace is a municipal financing tool that will help commercial property owners make cost-effective investments in renewable energy in our communities. The financing is done by the property and repaid by the property owner on their tax bill. Because the surcharge runs with the property, capital providers can offer long-term, low-cost financing to businesses that couldn't otherwise afford it, enabling them to seek immediate ROI for these investments. There's minimal cost for the administration of this. The city remains first in line. I just want to thank the Department of Finance for working with me over the past eight or nine months on this legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 16-0305, R Investigative Hearing, April 2016, Election Problems. Resolution for the purpose of reviewing with the Maryland State and Baltimore City Boards of Election the problems which impeded the Baltimore City primary election of April 26, 2016, to identify specific problems and request the city and state to develop a plan of specific steps to ensure a fair and efficient Baltimore City general election on November 8, 2016. Sponsored Clark, Kern, Scott, Costello, Middleton, Holton, Henry, Stokes, Specter.
Please note, Councilman Craft, a co-sponsor, Council Vice President Ryssinger, and Councilman Welsh is a co-sponsor. Any more co-sponsors? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This resolution reflects the frustration many of us feel on the way that the primary election of April 26, 2016, ended up being conducted or not. Basically, many of us arrived at polls to work as volunteers to learn that, of course, the doors weren't yet open, many judges had failed to appear throughout the city, and so many polls did not open on time, leaving lines of people who had to leave and may never have returned. Basically, in addition to that, we had an overuse of provisional ballots. At my poll, where I was working, as a volunteer, campaign volunteer, I had people come to me saying that they'd been told they were Republicans when they were lifelong Democrats and were not allowed to vote unless they wanted to vote as Republicans, which they did not. Some were told that they were registered as independents who were registered as Democrats. Thousands, or many hundreds, 1,100, I believe, of the provisional ballots could never be counted in the final count, because the names had long ago been separated from the ballots, therefore, there was no way to verify the validity of those provisional ballots. Members of the council, I'm not asking for, I am asking for the state and city election leaders to come here to the council, not to so much rehash problems with April 26, and I might add, problems with early voting as well. I'm asking them to come here with a plan of action which shows step by step how each of the major problems, for example, judges who just don't post, are being corrected for the November 8th general election. So, it's not just a gripe session. We know that things did not go well. We know it was a combination of state and local oversight. We know that many people who had never voted before and were going for their first-time voting will be forever discouraged from ever coming back. We want to correct that. So we want our public to know the plan whereby this will not be repeated, and that's what we're asking in this resolution to be presented to us. So I'm asking that the Judiciary Committee schedule it, not right away, but in July, late July, early August, when the boards have had a chance to figure out what happened and how to fix it for November the 8th general election. Thank you.
Thank you. This- This has been assigned to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution 16-0306-R, 2016 Afro Clean Green Block Campaign, Our Community, Our Responsibility. Resolution for the purpose of supporting the Afro's 2016 Clean Green Block Campaign and encouraging communities throughout Baltimore to participate by stepping up to beautify our city one block at a time. Sponsored Clark, President Young, Scott, Costello, Middleton, Holton, Henry, Stokes, Spector.
Please note, Councilman Kraft, Councilman Kern, Councilman Mosby, Council Vice President Rossinger, Councilman Welch and Councilman Branch as co-sponsors. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Some of you were not even born when the Afro, and there he is now, our colleague from the second, when the Afro Clean Block Club dominated Baltimore summers in such a positive way that bears repeating. I, I want to acknowledge Doc Marvin Cheatham, who is here this evening, who has organized and joined up with the Afro-American newspapers to begin to reestablish the Afro Clean Block Program in Baltimore City. It's a great program. It was founded in 1934 by Frances Murphy, the daughter of John Murphy, the founder of the Afro. It was, at one point, there were 8,000 young people and older people participating per summer. And so it's starting from scratch and will grow and grow as it always has. It was originally planned so that children would have an activity to keep them busy during the summer that would help them take pride in their own neighborhoods and responsibility for those neighborhoods to such a large degree. And so the children, the young people were captains and this campaign is starting, asking that every neighborhood choose four blocks within the neighborhood to begin with, recruit young people and work with them to beautify, clean, beautify, maintain and, and stand for election because at the end of the summer, the blocks get judged about which is the most beautiful and best maintained and decorated. And so it's a great activity. It worked. It made the city, it helped the city be clean and helped the young people have something that really not only kept their own neighborhoods decorated and clean and sparkling, but gave them a new respect for where they lived and a new sense of responsibility. So I'm asking for immediate adoption this evening for the Afro and for the communities to have. I'd like to move suspension of the rules to permit immediate adoption of this resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton, all, all those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, the rule is suspended. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Clark.
I'd like to, I'd like everybody who wants to speak on this to say something, but I'll move adoption of the resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor of adopting the resolution 16-0306-R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged and this resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognized, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to thank Doc Cheatham and Councilwoman Clark for bringing this resolution forward. I kind of recognize this as the 21st century Afro Clean Green Initiative because it's at a time where we need to think of ideas and ways to build trust and respect and getting the neighbors on your block to come outside and just find the commonalities of each other and share your experiences and tips and advice and, you know, it's amazing when you come outside and talk to your neighbor and get to know your neighbor. So it's a, it's a relationship building initiative and I thank you both for moving this forward.
Thank you. You can find the consent count in section eight at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent count? Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, this count is approved. We'll now move the bills on second reader, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 16-0308, Stephen W. Fogelman, Member Ethics Board, First District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on Wednesday, May 4th, 2016.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was distracted. Say that again.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, what was that?
I said, I was sidetracked, I didn't hear you.
Okay, we're talking about Council Bill 16-0309, Stephen Fogelman as a member of the Ethics Board. I don't have my glasses, I apologize.
308.
Yeah, we held, the committee held a hearing on Wednesday, May 4th, 2016, and I moved that nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 16-0309, Michael Ross, Member Civilian Review Board, Third District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Kern, all those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 16-0311, Saeda A. Hamptonell, Member Community Relations Commission, Third District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
I move that nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Kern, all those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 16-0312, Kuo-Pao Leon, Member Baltimore Public Arts Commission, First District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This most, this nomination is confirmed.
EA 16-0313, Brian Oster, Member Baltimore Public Arts Commission.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Spector, all those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we refer to all bills on second reader and third reader by short title.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of short title for the remainder of this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0595, City Streets Closing, Baylor Street.
Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on May 12th. There are no amendments, I move it favorably.
Second by Council Vice President Rossinger, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
Thank you.
Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
Maryland City Council Resolution 16-0660, Charter Amendment, Inner Harbor Park.
Chair recognized, Councilman Costello. You wanted to say something about this, right?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President and Chairman Kraft.
I should have let Kraft say something first, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we heard this bill on Tuesday, May 24th. This is a charter amendment, deals with Inner Harbor Park. I would defer to the councilman from the 11th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Costello. I do, I do apologize for calling you first.
It's all right. And Chairman Kraft, we had a great hearing and I just wanted to thank Waterfront Partnership and several of the city agencies that have been working together for a long time on a very public and transparent process and hopefully looking forward to this moving forward and being on the ballot in November. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0661, Adult Entertainment Businesses, National Human Trafficking Resource Center Hotline, Informational Sign Posting.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this bill was also heard on May 24th. There are amendments on the members desk, move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of adopting the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, these amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0666, City Property Naming of Bridge Located Between 1,200 and 1,300 Blocks of Fort Avenue to be Named, To Be The Karen J. Johns Memorial Bridge.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Mr. President, this bill was also heard on Tuesday, May 24th, Goring Bridge on Fort Avenue in the 11th District. I would defer to the councilman from the 11th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President and Chairman Kraft. This is a, a bill to rename a bridge after a longtime advocate in the Locust Point community, Ms. Karen Johns, who passed away about two months ago. I've been working with her family in the community, trying to find a, a fitting way to memorialize her life and this seemed like one such way. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0599, Zoning Condition Use Conversion of Two Dwelling Units to Three Dwelling Units in the R-8 zoning district, 35 South Fulton Avenue.
Chair recognized, Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kraft. Councilman Kraft, can you get me a second? Did I second it? Okay. Second by Councilman Kern, all those in favor of moving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The finding of facts has been adopted. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments, I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Kern, all those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill is amended. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Mr. President, move the bill favorable as amended.
Second. What did I just do?
You said Kraft, not Rossinger.
Okay. All right, it'll make a difference anyway. You, you second it? You seconded it? Okay. Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0614, Tax Sales Interest Rate on Redemptions.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did hear this bill on May 26th, would lower the interest rate from the current 18% to 12% that is paid tax sales certificate purchasers by the redeeming parties for owner-occupied residential properties. The bill is effective 30 days after enactment. There were no amendments, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0627, Property Tax Credit, City Supplement to Homeowners Tax Credit Program.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard this on May 18th. The bill would establish a local supplemental tax credit for eligible homeowners in Baltimore City. Qualifying homeowners will be granted a maximum tax limit, which is based on income. To be eligible homeowner must be at least 62 years old, have resided in the dwelling for at least 10 years and have a combined income of less than $40,000. There are amendments on the desk, I move the amendments.
Second by Council Vice President Rossinger, all those in favor of adopting the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, these amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Rossinger, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0634, Employees Retirement System and Elected Officials Retirement System, Actuary Assumptions, Benefits Payments, Clarifications and Modifications.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard this bill on May 26th. There are amendment, there are amendments on the desk.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of adopting the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, these men, the amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0640, Bond Issue Affordable Housing Loan, $6 Million.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. The bill was heard May 26th, Mr. President. The bill would allow $6 Million loan authorization, $3 Million per year, for two years to an affordable housing fund, which was created to support the production and preservation of affordable housing units in Baltimore City. There are no amendments, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Oh, Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to interrupt to take a moment, call some public attention to this because we just had a meeting, as you know, today about the Inclusionary Housing Task Force and so the subject is at the forefront. Over the last eight-plus years of an inclusionary housing program, we have provided subsidy for units out of a, a one-time allocation several years back of $2 Million. This bond bill, which the administration requested, will allow us to have three times that much money over the following two fiscal years and I'm looking forward to that being the spur to produce many more needed affordable units here in Baltimore City. Thank you.
And thank you. Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes. I'm sorry, you gotta read the school.
City Council Bill 16-0641, Bond Issue School Loan, $34 Million.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, we heard this May 26th, would allow for $34 Million loan authorization over two years for Baltimore's public schools, critical improvements such as fire alarms, HVAC systems and other urgent needs. There are no amendments, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0642, Bond Issue Community and Economic Development Loan, $45 Million.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heard on May 26th, again would allow $45 Million loan authorization over two years to support and promote efforts to revitalize and stabilize neighborhoods and support investment that retain and attract jobs in the city and increase tax revenues. Loans will be used to eliminate blight through strategic whole block demolition, leverage federal investment to build affordable housing, provide financing and incentives for private investment and improve the appearance of commercial and industrial areas. There are no amendments, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0643, Bond Issue Recreation Parks and Public Facilities Loan, $45 Million.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heard on May 26th, again $45 Million loan over two years, renovate existing public facilities or build new facilities such as municipal office building, courthouses, fire stations, multipurpose centers, libraries, parks, recreation centers, aquatic facilities and playgrounds. No amendments, move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0651, Property Tax Exemption, Community Managed Open Space.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Heard June 2nd, Mr. President. It would grant a property tax exemption for community managed open space. There were amendments and I, which are on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of adopting the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, these amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
I move the amendments, I move the bill as amended, Mr. President.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0665, Sale of Property Former Bed of Sinclair Lane and Certain Streets Lying, Lying Within the Former Freedom and Claremont Homes Project, Now Known As Orchard Ridge.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heard June 2nd, no amendments, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Branch, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
Maryland City Council Resolution 16-0672, Charter Amendment, Board of Estimates, Small Local, Local Small and Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard the bill June 2nd and there were no, are no amendments for the bill, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Holton, but I'm gonna give her a chance to speak to the bill. You ready?
Thank you, Mr. President.
us that much closer to that. I thank my colleagues for believing in our responsibility to support local businesses here in Baltimore City. It's really important with where we are today, local small businesses. I'd like to ask if any of the local small businesses in Baltimore City are present now, if they would stand? Well, that's great. We can certainly give them a round of applause, because I will tell you. Bob Wallace, the founder of Biff Technologies, is the Chair of the Mayor's Coalition on Supplier Diversity and Inclusion, and this is a group put in place more than two years ago to begin to look at how we increase inclusion of small businesses in particular. And it has been partly through their work that we have moved to the point where we are now with this charter amendment to create provision in our charter that would strengthen our ability for a race and gender neutral program that would really benefit small local businesses here in Baltimore City. Yes, we have an MWBE program, but the outcry for years from the small local business community has been, it's difficult for us to participate. To be a small business located and with significant presence in Baltimore City is at a disadvantage because they pay additional taxes because of our tax rate and other fees that we have. That means that they're, they have a heavier lift to do business in Baltimore City, and so it's time for us to lighten that load and help them get more opportunity through contracting efforts that we put forth in Baltimore City. We're also joined by Scott Phillips, who's the Director of the Minority Business Development Agency, that three years ago, we were one of the only governmental entity awarded one of these three-year, $900,000 grants, and we're working through the process of have that being renewed. But it seeks to help further our initiative to bring about equity and inclusion to businesses seeking to do business in Baltimore. So I thank you all for your support, and we'll be working on the ordinance to get that done so that we can actually create the program. Thank you.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve. This bill moves to third reading. Third reading to be held one meeting.
City Council Bill 15-0495, zoning condition use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, 926 Newington Avenue. City Council Bill 15-0572, zoning condition use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a four-family dwelling unit in the R7 zoning district, Varians 1715 Spence Street. City Council Bill 16-0622, repeal of ordinance 02-299, Flag House Courthouse 6, Plant New Development. City Council Bill 16-0633, Plant New Development, designation Canton Crossing.
Third reading for final passage.
City Council Bill 16-0638, Urban Renewal, Hilton North Business Area Amendment. Present young crafts, Scott Kern, Henry Specter, Milton Mosby, Holton Walsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0639, late night commercial operations extended scope. Present young crafts, Scott Kern, Henry Specter, Milton Mosby, Holton Walsh, Ross Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee on Friday, June 10th, will reconvene from the May 3rd hearing held on City Council Bill 16-645, supplementary conduit enterprise fund capital appropriation, Department of Transportation, $20 million. On Friday, June 10th, at 1:30 PM, the Budget Appropriations Committee will, is rescheduling a previously scheduled hearing to be held on May 3rd. 16-646, supplementary conduit enterprise fund operating appropriation, Department of Transportation, $6,252,636. Both of these bills will be heard together. Also, on your desk, colleagues, you have a revised schedule for the continuation of our budget hearings, and on Monday, June 13th, will be the Baltimore City Public School System at 9:00 AM. On Tuesday, June 14th, will begin at 12:00 noon until 5:00 PM. With several agencies, we've added three new ones, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Cable and Communications, and the Mayor's Office of Human Services. And then on Tuesday, June 14th, at 5:30 PM, we will have taxpayer night and the constant yield tax rate, which will be televised, and all that will take place here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a number of announcements for committee hearings. The first is, this Wednesday, June 8th, Councilman Henry, actually, the vice chair, will be hearing a taxation, finance, economic development bill, 16-0654, here in chambers at 2:00. It's the sale of property Block 4756A. It is the 2000 West Cole Spring Lane and right-of-way at West Cole Spring Lane. Also, on June 30th, which is Thursday a week, I'm sorry, it's at the end, the last Thursday of the month of June, at 10:00 AM here in chambers, taxation, finance, economic development, we're here at the Employees Retirement System Credit, credit for prior contractual service to the city. At the same day, June 30th, 10:00 AM, Bill 16-0649, city property grant of easements for the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council of Baltimore to grant three perpetual easements to the Maryland State Highway Administration for the maintenance of three stormwater drainage inlets along the Laney Valley Road. Same day, 10:05, June 30th, Council Bill 16-0650, sale of property 111 South Hanover Same day, June 30th, Council Bill 16-0626, 10:15 here in chambers, city contractors' work site posting and reporting requirements. Requesting move for suspension of rules, Mr. President.
Second by Council Vice President Ross Singer. All those in favor of suspending rules announced a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion encouraged. Chair of the House, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. On July 27th, we're gonna announce three bills, well, actually, one bill at a time, since I have to ask for suspension of rules. But the first bill is Bill 16-66, 16-0669, Port Covington Development District will be heard 5:00 here in chambers. It will be a televised hearing. It's the last Wednesday in July. Suspension, move for suspension of rules, again, Mr. President.
Second by Council Vice President Ross Singer. All those in favor of suspending rules announced a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion encouraged. Chair of the House, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Bill 16-0670, Port Covington Bond Issuance, 5:00, July 27th. And the third bill, Mr. President, I ask for move for suspension of rules.
Second by Council Vice President Ross Singer. All those in favor of suspending rules announced a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion encouraged. Chair of the House, Councilman Stokes.
Again, Mr. President, all three bills are not combined, but they're all needed for this particular project. July 27th, last Wednesday, in July, 5:00 here in chambers, Bill 16-0671, Port Covington Special Taxing District. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Council Vice President Ross Singer. Any more committee announcements on this side? Okay.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0630, Wednesday, June 29th, at 1:15 PM in the council chambers. This is zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a one-family dwelling unit and one efficiency unit in the R8 zoning district, Varians located at 317 West 30th Street. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 16-0653 on Wednesday, June 29th, at 1:30 PM in the council chambers. This is rezoning, 1314 East Fayette Street, 1401, 1501, 1601, East Pratt Street, and 1400, 1500, and 1600 Bank Street. Committee will also hold a hearing on Wednesday, when, yeah, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0674 on Wednesday, July 13th, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is the transit and traffic. It's the no camp or mobile home parking with residential streets. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee is canceling City Council Bill 16-0658 that was scheduled to be heard on June 16th at 3:10 PM here in council chambers. It's canceled to be rescheduled at a later date, and that was an ordinance concerning the Baltimore City Landmark List exteriors of the Ambassador Theater.
Chair of the House, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, June 22nd, at 4:00 PM, the Housing and Community Development Committee will hear Resolution City Council 15-0275, for the purpose of encouraging the administration to examine how best to incorporate elements of Albuquerque, New Mexico's There's a Better Way program to assist homeless individuals with work and support in Baltimore's efforts to make homelessness a rare and brief experience.
Regular announcements. First, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the greatest fighter of all time, Muhammad Ali, who passed away recently. We're gonna ask for a moment of silence for him, and anybody want to speak to that after we do the regular announcements, can do that. Chair of the House, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I rise with deep sadness, and I already asked the vice president to honor a moment of silence for this young lady for the passing of young Mikel Lewis, who died in a tragic drowning incident in my district, and I just want to use that as we're moving into the summer months to harp on the importance of swimming safety and the importance that we must, must, must try to teach as many of our young people how to be safer when they're in the pools this summer. It's not okay for so many of our young people to not know how to swim. The city does have programs for that. We, the council president is gonna come out to Clifton Park this summer and learn how to swim. We're gonna get everybody, it's very important, especially for our young people, to be safe when they're in the water, because it only takes a couple of seconds, and it could take a life, just like it took this young lady's. Thank you.
Yeah. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Specter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I mention also a request for a moment of silence, I do want the listening audience to understand that the CHAP hearing for the Ambassador Theater has to be rescheduled because the public hearing at the, at CHAP won't be until the 14th, and then the community will have an opportunity to support the historic preservation. It just hadn't been heard yet by the CHAP Commission. Also, and I would like to bring a memory that I have of the CHAP when we have an opportunity. The opportunity for a moment of silence would be for three great Baltimoreans. Lou Grasnick contributed a great deal to our city, Leon Sax, Leonard Sax, I'm sorry, and Helen Lee, a great lady, lived to be 101. May their memory be a blessing for all of us.
You have all that in? Okay. Regular announcements. Chair of the House, Council Vice President Ross Singer. I said, regular announcement. Okay, go ahead.
Because I just want to briefly join you with the respect that we should have for Muhammad Ali. I was a young man in 1960, mid-sixties. I'm very much against the conflict in Southeast Asia, and there was riots at the Democratic Convention in Chicago against the war, but Muhammad Ali sacrificed part of his career for a great social cause and message, and there was a lot of disdain for that from Americans because of what he did, but there were a lot of us that gained respect for him, for what he did with his stance against the Vietnam War. We can always talk about his athletic accolades, but as a social leader in the mid-sixties, there was none greater than Muhammad Ali and his stance against the Vietnam War and what he sacrificed for his career to make that stance, and I echo you, Council President, in saying that we need to have a moment of silence for our great American.
Okay, Chair of the House, Councilwoman Specter, but I have a question. Did Kurt Anderson actually knock Muhammad Ali out?
Yes.
Because I saw him laying on the cam, I saw him laying on the canvas in one of the shots. Maybe it was a stunt, but he was boxing Kurt Anderson, and I saw him laying on the floor. He must have just laid there for a photo op.
Mr. President, members of the council, yesterday I had the honor of receiving the Alumni Award at Northwestern High School, and they were speaking of the CHAP, and I reminded them of a time then, the CHAP came to Baltimore City, and we were in the city council, and Du Burns was the mayor, and he, the CHAP was coming to kick off a program that he was promoting around the cities to help young black men, and as you knew, he had a hard time verbalizing. And so, we were invited, one member at a time, to, to President Burns's chambers, to meet him, because he couldn't handle meeting all of us at once. So, the last person to come into the chambers always was, for the 5:00 meeting, was Councilman Enfume. And we were all in the chambers, and here comes Councilman Enfume, and the door was closed, and we didn't know why we were this, we were having this plan, until we opened the door, and he saw that it was the CHAP meeting with us. And he said, "CHAP, I have a great 8x10 picture of us voting during the campaign for the Rainbow Coalition, and it would be my honor if you would autograph it." So the CHAP shook his head. He had a difficult time talking, and the councilman dashed upstairs, dashed back downstairs, came in, showed the CHAP the picture, and the CHAP looked at the picture, and looked at Enfume, and looked at the picture, and looked at Enfume, and looked at the pictures and said, "You're still ugly." He, he had a great sense of humor. He was a beautiful man.
Chair of the House, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I, of course, do not remember the CHAP and his fighting days, but I grew up in a family where Muhammad Ali is revered. Actually, in my uncle's office, there's this big picture of Muhammad Ali that I used to look at every single day as a kid, and just, we were raised to the point of watching these old fights, and I have these memories of me and my brothers running around in our underwear screaming, "Ali, pu ma ye, Ali, pu ma ye," not even knowing, that young, what he meant outside of the boxing ring, and that's what I really want to talk about, the greatness of the CHAP. It's not just his greatness in the boxing ring, it's not just that he made it cool and okay to brag about being the best, to brag about being the person that no one can beat, but also about his courage in, in being a unabashed, unbiased, unwilling to compromise black man in America when everyone hated him. You know, everyone loves the CHAP now that he's gone, but there was a time in his life where everyone hated him for those same very reasons, for standing up, for his rights, for his religion, for going against the grain, for challenging people's ways and thoughts and their American way of life, and that's what we should remember him as, and what we should remember him for. And lastly, I would be disrespectful for the CHAP and his, and his words and his ways if it did not point out that while we are mourning his death as we should, we should also not forget that 113 people in Baltimore City have lost their lives to violence this year.
Chair of the House, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr.
And on your point, Councilman, Muhammad Ali took one of Baltimore's own, under his belt, what was his name? Richard Burton, who was a protege of Muhammad Ali, and he gave him a lot of credit and a lot of kudos the day on 10/10 on the radio this morning. And I, and I was unaware of the close relationship between Richard Burton and the CHAP. He told some really great stories. Chair of the House, Councilman.
And I'd just like to add that I, I had the opportunity to meet Muhammad Ali a couple of times, and as you all know, my husband was the brother of Larry Middleton, which was a heavyweight boxer, and through that relationship, I met several people in that boxing world, but during the time that he did come here, he helped influence the boxing businesses, you know, along the corridor of North Avenue and so on, and he was a strong civil rights advocate of, of the poor, and again, as Councilman Scott had mentioned, helping and motivating African-American males, and you can kind of see history repeating itself in a sense, so he, it wasn't just boxing, he, he brought a new light to, to that sport and made it a, you know, an awareness. that sport and made it a, you know, an awareness of how an African-American male can, can be successful and instilled that hope into all of us in that era. So, there is one, I can't think of the name of it, but it's right there at North and McCullough. It's a boxing facility there, and I think he, right, and I think he had visited that facility at, at one point, and Larry Middleton, the person that has that business, he was trained under Larry Middleton, so he was a person that also looked up to Ali and kind of followed in his boxing path, and he also was an architect by trade, so, and that, I give a lot of credit to Muhammad Ali for, for that, so thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, June 13th, at 5:00 PM in the council chambers, and I ask for a moment of silence for Lou Grasnick, Leonard Sax, Helen Lee, Mikel Lewis, and Muhammad Ali.
Thank you. There being no further notice, this concludes the 120th meeting of the setting first term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.